Hello and welcome to the Monday, July 28, 2025 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 8th, not January 28th, it would be July 8th, I guess. Dates wrong here. Oh, this is from the advertiser. Okay, sorry, January 8th, 2025, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We are not moving into executive session, so we'll just skip over that. We will...
[inaudible]
You're having trouble hearing me?
[laughter]
All right. Kaz, mic up. Good. Okay. I'll repeat what I said. So, in accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 8th, 2025, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We are not moving into executive session. But first, we will do roll. Mr. Record?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Lenning Beeter? Mr. Lee? Ms. Nurse? Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here. We have a quorum. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
[inaudible]
All right, I would like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed. We will move on to the Board President's Report. So, welcome, everybody, to a summer meeting. As you can tell, some members are on vacation and are not here this week, but thank you, everybody, for joining up. For those who aren't aware, we did finish registration for board voting for next year, and we were informed that there are six names on the ballot this year, three incumbents and three new folks. I see we have a lot of folks here. Just a reminder, as we go to our comment period during the meeting, there will be two sessions for public comment. The first is if you have any comments on specific items on the board agenda, and we'll ask that you'll call out which agenda item you're speaking towards. And the second public comment period, any member of the public is free to speak on any topic. So, if you're here to speak on something on the agenda, that would be the first session. And again, any other topic would be the second session within the meeting. That's, I think, all I'm going to give for my Board President's Report, and I will move on to the Superintendent's Reports.
Thank you, President Marini. Hello, Hillsborough. First item in my Superintendent's Report, and I see there are a lot of new faces here tonight, and one of the things that I want to make sure of is that these new faces don't just hear news from the school district occasionally or from other people. So, Mr. Handler here to my right has set up some laptops over by the table over there, and there's also QR codes on the wall over there. We send out a weekly email newsletter during the course of the year, from September to June, where you can get information about everything involving the school district, including the budget, each and every week that it is sent out during the course of the school year. So, if you would like to get that kind of information before you leave today, please sign up on the laptops or the QR code. The other thing that if anybody signs up tonight that I will send out to you as well is a lot of people have questions about the budget. We've been getting emails about that, too. It'll be very difficult to try and have board members respond to you about the, you know, seven or eight-month process, the three public board meetings, and the community engagement night where the budget was discussed. But if you sign up for an email address tonight, tomorrow I will email you, an email, obviously, with links to all of those meetings, so you can watch them in detail at your leisure, where you may have further questions. Each meeting, Community Engagement Night, was about two hours. Our other board meetings are usually between one hour and two hours, so it's a lot of information to get all at once. So, the bottom line is, if you want more information from the school district, please sign up before you leave tonight. Thank you, Mr. Handler, for setting that up. Speaking of Mr. Handler, Mr. Handler is spearheading our redistricting effort that is going to take place for 2026, 2027 at the elementary level. We've been talking about that for about a year-plus, but now, at every board meeting, we're going to take a couple of minutes to update you as to where we are in that process. And again, for elementary students and parents, that does mean that in 2026, 27, there are going to be some students who are attending a school this coming year that in 26, 27 may be going to a different school. That's literally what redistricting means. So, Mr. Handler, I will turn it over to you at this point, if you can update the community as to where we are and what's currently going on with the redistricting process.
Sure. So, currently, we're engaged in a comprehensive evaluation of all the rooms throughout the K-4 schools. We're doing a comprehensive walkthrough, determining how many rooms specifically can hold a homeroom-sized classroom. We're looking at all spaces, whether the room can hold a full-size or a smaller-size class. The other thing we're looking at, too, as part of that walkthrough, very specifically is particularly bathrooms, because as part of state law, kindergarten classes have to have a bathroom in the room. There is the ability to do a waiver, so that if we don't have a room that has a bathroom, if the bathroom is within near vicinity and visual sight, that is a possibility. We also have multiple special ed self-contained programs that also require a bathroom in the room. So, one of the things we're doing right now is currently evaluating all of our spaces throughout the entire district to determine truly what we have available for use for a full-day kindergarten program. Once we have that data, and we're pretty close to finishing that up now, we'll next be meeting with both special ed and transportation to really look at how the special ed programs, their locations, if they're optimal or not, and then, from there, looking at what our school boundaries are to try to help equalize, equate, I'm trying to think of the best word there, but kind of build it so that we're not overcrowded in one building and undercrowded in another, which is currently the situation we're in right now.
Thank you, Mr. Handler. So, every month, Mr. Handler will be updating us on redistricting and where we are, and probably as it gets closer to the end of the '25, '26 school year, you may see more of a formal presentation with notes as to where people are going. Right now, we will just be updating you. And I'd also like to introduce Dr. Lisa Rabimbas to the dais for the first time. She is also involved in the full-day kindergarten process, and she's the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. She's looking at this from an educational and instructional point of view. So, I'll be asking her to update the community from her point of view as to what we're doing in looking to implement full-day kindergarten as well. So, Lisa, if you could do a similar update there.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So, during the month of July, the elementary principals and I met to discuss the current status of kindergarten and to design a plan moving forward for this school year so that we can implement full-day kindergarten in September of 2026. We reviewed the curriculum, instruction, guidelines, current staffing and scheduling, and our next steps in the process will involve a further review of the New Jersey Department of Education, kindergarten guidelines, a further analysis of our schedule, impact on special education, our expansion of curriculum and staffing. So, we're at the beginning stages of the actual curriculum portion of full-day kindergarten.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rabimbas. And, Mr. President, that concludes my Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to committee reports, and we will start. Ms. Jackson, are you going to go for education?
The Ed Committee met on July 8th. It was a relatively short meeting for us, but we did review the HHS electives. We had some outstanding questions, which Mr. Volpe addressed in his weekly brass tacks. Mr. Handler gave us a redistricting update as well, and then we reviewed the curriculum revision cycle.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Nurse is out, so I will cover the HR Communications Committee meeting. Again, another shorter meeting. This was on Wednesday, July 23rd. We did discuss the termination of an employee contract, which will be on the agenda for tonight, and we also discussed something I find exciting, which is the full board will be voting on an additional stipend for the creation of the girls' wrestling head coach position, the girls' wrestling team next school year.
Speed up.
Better? Okay. I'll start over. So, we had two items on the agenda. One is the termination of an employee contract, which will be on the agenda for voting tonight. The next one is an exciting one, which is the, we'll be voting on the additional stipend for the creation of a girls' wrestling head coach, so that we can start a girls' wrestling team in the next school year. And that was the two main items that we discussed in the Human Resources Committee. I will move over to Mr. Handler for, I'm sorry, Ronjo, Mr. Davis, for the operations minutes.
Thank you. Operations met on Friday, the 25th, just the other day. And a few housekeeping things. We discussed the policy of requiring groups that rent space in the district, having to hire security folks and those things, and that's still on the table to be discussed. Some in-house things, the state has increased what is called the bid threshold, which really increases the latitude that the business administrator has for approving contracts and stuff without having to go out to bid. It's just kind of a procedural vote. We voted to accept an increased insurance policy, what is called deadly weapons protection, which is a testimony, I guess, of the times in which we live. That protects us from any damages or injuries that may occur at school as a result of deadly weapons having been smuggled into the school. And I don't think that would have been a budget item 40 years ago, but there you go. We spent a good amount of time interviewing attorney firms. The attorney that has been with Hillsborough for many years is stepping aside. They had stepped aside the principal, and so we're looking for a new firm to take over those duties. We interviewed three different firms, and everyone thought some of them were good, and it'll just take time to sort through that and see where the strengths lay. And we also reviewed a proposal from LAN Associates, L-A-N Associates, to do some preparatory work, having to do with full-day kindergarten, engineering reviews, site review, these types of things, specifically to address bathroom questions in buildings where that would be required. And there was some hesitation, because there was some lack of clarity with the results of the demographic studies that had been done, but it was passed through to the board. It was kind of a 50-50 thing. So, it is on the agenda tonight. And, you know, if all-day kindergarten, full-day kindergarten is going to happen, and it would seem to be an inevitability, the whole bathroom thing has to be addressed, because it's code. But we talked about it on Friday and kicked some things around. So, that's it for the operations committee.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And for governance, we met on Wednesday, July 23rd. We discussed a couple of items. One was the scheduling of the board retreat, which is basically an off-site meeting for the board to discuss items within the board. The next one was discussing recognition. So, for those of you who have been to some board meetings, we recognize students, we recognize students for student athletics, student academics. We also recognize things like Suicide Prevention Month and other holidays and other things throughout the year. We do our best to kind of align with the township, or we have up to this point, but there was a question on if we could define what those recognitions are and have kind of board agreement on how to approach that. So, the first step was taken as a kind of a baseline calendar of events were designated going against, I think, the Federal Register of Recognized Holidays, as well as what the township recognizes as well. And then, last but not least, we did obviously discuss feedback from residents around the budget and ways to try to stabilize the budget over future years. And that was the end of the governance meeting minutes. All right. We will move on to comments from the board and public. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So, if anybody has anything on the action agenda that they would like to make comments on, please come forward and just mention which agenda item you're speaking on. Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment, and if there's any board comment before we move on to the agenda items generally. Okay. Seeing none. 10, motion to approve executive, I'll take a motion to approve executive session, approval of minutes. 10.1, motion to approve executive session minutes, 62325. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes, 62325. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion before? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As we move to vote on agenda items, just a reminder, there are six of us here, so it is a majority, which means four votes for something to pass, because there's six. Three would be not passing. All right. Mr. Superintendent?
Thanks. I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions in the area of education. Travel and related expenses, affirming the superintendent's HIV determinations, overnight trips, revise staff for Title I Summer Program, approve the staff of the Summer Multilingual Learners Program, approve revised curriculum writers, submission of application for the TCNJ Educator Grant, the substitutes for the Summer Credit Advancement Program, submission of IDEA grant for funds, approving the acceptance of the Fiscal Year '26 Teach STEM Classes in Non-Public Schools grant, submitting the statement of assurance for the Fiscal Year '26 Teach STEM Classes in Schools grant, approving staff to administer the model testing for ESL, approving virtual or remote instruction plan for '25, '26, and approving the five-year curriculum revision review cycle.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes, except on 11.1, no to travel, Mr. Volpe's travel to Chicago.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of human resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Resignations, appointments, revised appointments, revised salaries, coaches for '25, '26, changes in employment status, transfer and changes in assignment, leaves of absence, turnkey trainers, extended school year program and special services summer work staff, revised summer enrichment program stipends, building monitor summer work, student teachers, extra coverage, motion to create two unbudgeted instructional assistant positions, motion to create unbudgeted girls' head wrestling coach position, and the motion to approve the suspension of a district employee.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion before the board votes?
I do have, I have one question on item 12.16 on the stipend. I didn't see a notice as to what that stipend would be. Is it, what would that?
It's a head wrestling coach, and the contract does state for a head wrestling coach, so it would be the same as the boy's head wrestling coach. There wouldn't be any difference. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I'd get that.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, with exception on 12.2, I am a no for Alvaro, Galetta, Gare, and Robert.
Let's just make sure we have that right. Can you provide the last name slowly, just so?
Sure.
You can do this?
Alvaro.
Alvaro, the second one? Second person on the list?
Galetta, Gare, and Robert.
So, is that 12.2?
Yes.
Gare.
Alvaro.
And what was the third one? Robert?
Robert. That's the fourth one.
So, there's?
There were four.
Alvaro, Gare.
Gare, Galetta, and Robert.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. I'd ask for the board's consideration in approve the following motions in the area of operations. Monthly bills, financial statement, financial status, line item transfers, professional services with Learn Well, professional services with the Canopy Tree, shared services agreement with NJ Stride, contract for commercial interiors direct for flooring work, the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment, disposal of books, the increasing of the bid threshold, approving LAN's proposal for A&E services for the full-day kindergarten, approving LAN to submit an amendment, approving a settlement agreement and a second settlement agreement, approving professional service agreement with Energy for America, approving commercial driving licensed drug and alcohol screening vendor, the revised '25, '26 parent transportation contract, transportation contract with First Student for ESY program, transportation contract with First Students for the school year, transportation contract with Montauk for the school year, transportation contract with Valcheck for the school year, approving the use of alternative space for instructional services for the coming school year, approving the resolution for bathroom waivers for '25, '26, and approving out-of-district placements for the '25, '26 school year.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question, if I may.
Questions by the board?
I'm not sure what Learn Well, what service Learn Well provides.
Jerry, do you have that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the...
What service does Learn Well provide?
Learn Well is a lot of the, when a student is out for home instruction, sometimes in a hospital setting, sometimes you provide it there or just home instruction for students.
Thank you.
Mr. Heo?
I did not check my email after I messaged Mr. Volpe and Mr. Eckert about Canopy Tree. The file was an old file, and I didn't know if that got updated.
Yeah, so we will get, we will get the dates updated on that before I sign it and return it to them, but the rates are what they are proposing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes, except no on 13.12.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of policies and regulations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve Policy 5111, eligibility of resident and non-resident students as reviewed by the Operations Committee for second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, we'll now move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meetings will open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, the members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So, just a reminder, we'll have a clock going. If you hear the beep, we've hit three minutes, and appreciate your cooperation.
Josh Gamzy, Murray Drive in Hillsborough. I'd like to speak in favor of the recent increase in taxes to support the Hillsborough Township public schools. Why? Because keeping a strong school system in Hillsborough is the right thing to do from both a civic and a financial point of view. We've been getting cuts in state funding, and I encourage everyone to talk to their state representatives about this problem and to vote this November. But in the meantime, we need to fill the gap and keep the schools fully funded. Let's say you're a parent with children in the school system. Your average property tax is $11,418, of which $7,535 goes to the school system. Now you look at private schools in Somerset County. The average price is $21,158. You're getting a good deal. We moved from Nashville, Tennessee, where the property taxes may be much lower, but this is reflected in how wretched the public schools there are. My wife, Stephanie, worked in the governor's office for children's services, and the joke there was that the only reason we kept Mississippi in the U.S. was so that Tennessee wasn't dead last for school quality. You get what you pay for, and what you get in Hillsborough is a great education for your kids. Okay, but let's say you don't have fluent kids in the school system. Let's say you don't even care that it's a good thing to have a well-educated population, although it certainly is. But keep in mind that people buy houses in Hillsborough because of the great schools. If we do not keep the schools high-quality by funding them fully, then the local housing market is going to end up in a downward spiral, where no one wants to come here because the schools are bad, and the schools remain bad because property values and thus the tax base have tanked. I recognize that your house value isn't money you can spend today, but don't you want that value to stay high until you do sell one day? And don't you want to live in a thriving town? The economy of Hillsborough absolutely relies on the quality of the schools, and so the quality of the schools affects all of us, not just school-age families. The New Jersey Department of Education keeps a list of school spending. For the 104 school districts with at least 3,500 students, Hillsborough has the 20th lowest spending for total costs and the 8th lowest for administrative costs. Think about that. You're getting great value for your tax dollars. You don't enjoy paying taxes. No one does, but I know what you would like even less, a town in a downward spiral because we didn't support our school system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Mala Mahadevan, Lawrence Court, 25 Lawrence Court. First of all, many in this, in this room have watched a lot of the videos, and we totally disagree with this significant increase. Just to give you an idea, my taxes have gone up by 22%, just this year, and many in this room, their taxes have gone up from 20% to 30%. Just to give you an idea, right now, per student in Hillsborough, and my kids go to Hillsborough High School, its average per student is $25,000. Per student is the average per student. Bridgewater, which is our neighboring school, better ranked, and Montgomery is average $21,000 per student. So, this increase of $22 million is totally unreasonable and unsustainable. Per the New Jersey state law, all the, you know, residents here should be voting for any such significant increase, and we expect that we get a vote on this increase, and let us decide. If most people, residents or taxpayers, say yes, there needs to be an increase, then we all will pay for it. But if most of us do not agree, I think it should not be. It shouldn't be taken based on one or two people coming and speaking here, a student or a teacher coming and speaking, but the taxpayers have to have a say. Lastly, I would like to hear also from the five people in this committee who actually voted yes, as to the reason, because in the next election cycle, we will then get a chance... as to the reason, because in the next election cycle, we will then get a chance to decide why you voted yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I'm Hasid Dani, and I'm also on Lawrence Court, Hillsborough. So if I compare the number of student enrollment between last four years, the number of student enrollment has gone down in Hillsborough. Still, the budget has gone up quite significantly. One, we are comparing Tennessee versus New Jersey. Why can't we compare Montgomery versus Hillsborough? And those people who are voting to increase our taxes, do they really live in Hillsborough? Are they impacted by this tax increase? If not, who are they to decide our future?
Thank you for your comment.
Mark Aaron Krantz, 42, High Acre Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I just want to put the tax increase in perspective. It's costing me one month social security payment. Everybody who's on a fixed budget in this town just got beaten over the head by a hammer by five people rather than a referendum by the people. Thank you. Thank you.
Mohammed Khan, 4 Lou's Drive, Hillsborough. So as Mr. Bala said, I believe people are not coming into Hillsborough. People are actually moving out of Hillsborough because of tax hikes. And I urge the board to explore, you know, creative solutions other than just saying yes or no. I mean, there must be some solution, we should come out. I understand the importance of supporting this school, but I have a neighbor who was a retired teacher, just moved out of the town. So please do consider this transportation. Somebody mentioned Bridgewater, other neighboring town, shared transportation services, whatever we can do to keep us in the town, not force us and the kids to go out of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, my name is Shangar Nandra from 12 Davenport Way, Hillsborough. I think it's obvious that the budget has gone way above what was ever expected. The complaint that I have is really the salaries of people who work for the school district. Superintendent, $230,000 something. Why? You have assistant superintendent, $212,000. You hired a consultant, $222,000. I don't see anybody less than $200,000 when they hire people. All of a sudden, now, people have mentioned Montgomery. I've been looking at Montgomery because my daughters live there. About five, six years ago, their superintendent was making less, or more than Hillsborough superintendent. And now, the previous governor, Chris Christie, had put a ceiling, a cap, on the superintendent salaries, and old salaries. Now, the Montgomery superintendent makes about $188,000. Hours has gone way up. The point I'm really making is that 80%, I think, of your costs maybe are involved in salaries and benefits and all the rest of it, and you need to look at that. It's wrong also to say that to have the best school with the high property taxes will keep this town flourishing. Wrong. People are literally, they can't wait to get out of this town. There are many, many people whose children have already gone through the school system. My last kid was, I think, about 25 years ago. So for the last 25 years, I'm just paying all these property taxes. I can't move because my wife says she wants to just live in the house she lived all her life. So there are all these constraints that people have. And I don't think that you guys are looking at very, very objectively. I'm looking at some of these things here: trip expenses, or dance group, or this group. Well, they should be prioritized. I don't think the school should be paying for all those things. It's the taxpayer. And remember, not everybody's part of the dance club. There's only a handful of people. So why should everybody else be paying for that? You've got to look into that. And one other thing. You hired a business operations manager. You're paying him $212,000. What is his deliverable? How is he going to benefit the school district, the town, et cetera? He was there last year, now he renewed his contract. What is his deliverable? Can the public look at their deliverables? Is it worth the value that we're going to be paying for? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment before we close public comment?
Sure.
Good evening, I'm Brian Jeniton. I live at Grafton Court, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Quick question before I start, but by all means, run the timer, I'm okay with it. Are you guys allowed to field questions? No. Then I'll put it as a rhetorical, and then maybe someone can correct or retort. The $1.6 million that we got from the state for the raising of the $20 million, was it only used for the football, the track, and the bleachers? I'm guessing yes, because that's what I had read, but, you know, obviously you can't put everything. Maybe you did. My question is, was there any academics that that money went to? Maybe something for the elementary school, the middle school, the intermediate school? Did it all go to a track, a football field, and bleachers? And I understand that you guys said that it would save us money, that we as taxpayers would not have to put money towards that, which I'm sure the taxpayers appreciate. But it's a football team, a track team, that's benefiting from that $1.6? What about the academics? Where is school? You guys are in the business of educating. And I'm not saying that sports are not important. It teaches so many things, from teamwork to working together. But the elementary schools then would not be getting anything. The middle school, the intermediate school. I have kids in the elementary school. If my taxes are going to go up $20 million, my kid's not going to play football. And he's probably not going to run track. I'm taking a $20... Well, we are taking $20 million for two groups to more or less benefit, and for us to have really good seats to enjoy that. Was it worth $20 million? You know, could something else have been done with that $1.6? I don't know, you guys are in that position. But I'm hoping that it went to more than just football, track, and some really sweet seats. Thank you.
Thank you. So I can clarify just a little bit of confusion here. So there was a comment earlier about people not from Hillsborough voting. The Board of Education is the one that collectively, a majority, voted to increase taxes. Those are residents of Hillsborough that are paying the same taxes increases that you are. That may not make it better, but the question was raised, was this somebody outside of Hillsborough that approved the $20 million? Yeah, it's public record. It was myself, Ms. Nurse, Ms. Lanning Beeter, Mr. Lee, and who am I missing? Oh, Ms. Craig. So there's five that voted yes, four that voted no. The additional dollars that you mentioned, the $1.6 million, so that was something added? You can if you want, yeah, sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of money numbers being thrown around too, and that's why I, again, encourage everybody before you leave to sign up for our weekly email newsletter that comes out during the school year to help. I understand why that seems confusing. So when the board raised the taxes to a certain level, there was something called tax incentive aid. So it was an additional $1 million for any schools that took advantage of what the board took advantage of. The $1.6 million that you mentioned are completely outside, and I'd like to explain that so there's clarity. So everything with the $20 million and the $1 million that is instructional stuff is going towards the schools. I continuously advocate that Hillsborough is not getting its fair share of funding. I've been down to Trenton more times than I can count. I was on the floor for the governor's State of the State address. I testified before both the Assembly and the Senate, and I get our representatives to come to my office to discuss things. So the last time I had a representative come to my office to discuss things, I told that representative, there's no way I'm ever going to budget for a whole bunch of things because of what the state is doing for us. He asked me, what kind of things aren't you going to ever budget for? I said, we have athletic facilities that are kind of falling apart: a football field, a scoreboard, bleachers. I am never going to budget for these things within the tax levy because we don't have the room to do that. The representative asked me, how much does all of that cost? I said, you're talking like $1.6 million. End of conversation. Our budget was finished, aside the $20 million, the $1 million, that's all different money. And then we found out from the state that we were approved for another $1.6 million. Essentially, what happened is the state recognized the things that I'm never going to be able to put in for a budget, and they gave us that same amount of money equaling that. Now, that's where that number came from. I think, Ms. Stats, you had asked a question. I've been sick, I haven't been around the past few days. Do we have to spend the money on that? The board doesn't have to spend the money on that, but that's where the amount of money came from. And the reason why I asked for that amount of money was because I don't think I'm ever going to be coming to the board and saying, hey, we have to squeeze in half a million dollars to redo the turf field, or we need $600,000 to replace the bleachers that were getting sued because somebody fell down. That was something I could never see building into a budget, and that's why I was thankful that we got some extra money. In the end, any actions that we take to repair these things, the board does indeed have to vote on. So that's the clarification about that money. I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
And I'll just add on, the increase in state aid that we approved has to go for a TNE, thorough and efficient education. The state had to approve what those dollars were going for, and they had to be education-focused. So, may not make anybody feel any better, just an explanation of how the process works, but that was what was required to even get that budget approved. And they actually came back to us, we put our original piece in and said, we don't approve a couple of things, so we had to make them education-focused. The other thing that we discussed in a couple of meetings is, when those dollars are identified, we tried to put 2/3 towards non-recurring expenses. The reason being, if we spent the whole $20 million on teachers, say for example, and then they cut $10 million of the $20 million next year, like additional funding cuts somehow, we then have to cut teacher positions. So we don't obviously expect that much of a cut, but we wanted to put some of it in improvements in the district that are education-focused, and some of it towards teacher salaries and recurring costs each year. But the goal is, we want to hopefully last five-plus years where we're not every year trying to figure out, do we have to cut teachers? Do we have to cut things that are important to students? And this gives us that cushion for an extended period of time. As I mentioned, it was a 5-4 vote, so not all board members obviously approved of either any increase or the level of increase that was approved, but that was the decision made by the board. The other thing, I think, and I'm not a tax guy, I don't work for the tax office, the jump this quarter in taxes, I believe specifically that the amount of it was to cover that increase per household. I don't believe people should expect that amount to be the standard every quarter. Am I misspeaking here?
I don't want to speak about taxes specifically.
But the big jump was to cover that amount for this year. So that was this coming quarter. Plus your regular cost of your house increase, whatever that was valued at, and that change. So it was a couple of things that led into the large jump for one quarter. But we did speak to the tax office within Hillsborough, and they said they don't want us discussing taxes. So any questions that you have around that, you should go to the tax office. They actually, sorry, tax assessor's office. And they said, please reach out to them and to point any questions back to them because they don't want us trying to explain what they do the same way they would not explain to you Board of Ed policies and procedures. So we did receive emails asking us not to talk about the taxes themselves and to go to the tax assessor's office. Correct. So hold on one second. We didn't close public comments, so if somebody who has not spoken wants to come up to the podium and speak, it's not a Q&amp;A session, but if somebody has comments, we're not going to stop people from being able to speak, but please do so within the confines of the meeting.
Hello, David Gordon, Dumont Round. I'll be brief. Just want to take a moment to thank the board for the really, really, really hard work you're doing. Maybe people here who don't come to a lot of meetings or don't know a lot about school finance, which I know a little bit about, not a lot. It's very, very, very complex, and especially in New Jersey, where so much of our school money comes from the tax base, and especially with the problems we've had with the state. So it's a very difficult situation, no matter what. And I do thank the board for doing your best to really maintain the level of schools we have, even if it's unpleasant for all of us, including, you know, you guys who are all taxpayers. I do want to also mention, one of the gentlemen that spoke before used the idea of what's the deliverable? Like, what are we getting for this money? And it just occurred to me that, in my view, our deliverable is... Like, my son, who just graduated after having his entire career in Hillsborough from pre-K up through and just graduated, is heading off to college with a great school, with a great merit scholarship, and due to the education he's received here, I have got to run the high school. So in a few years, I'll be one of those people who say, I have no kids in the school, I'm still paying taxes. But that's the way it works, and that's the investment we have to make in the future. So I hope things can get better with state funding, but in the meantime, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Ajit Tripathi from Tarpet Road, Hillsborough. I have a situation where my son is graduating this year, so very thankful to the Hillsborough schooling system. I have also a situation where my second kid is now in first grade, going to the second grade. So I have 10 more years to go. I'd love to stay here. Now looking into the budget tax increase, now I'm thinking what situation will happen to me. I'm around 50s, I'll be 60s. My salary probably won't be increasing that far and that fast, and then he will be graduating, it will be way high from my pay grade to pay him stay in this school, of course. Appreciate everything. We know the system, we are working through the system. But it also challenged for me now to look in how to leave a livelihood. Now, I'm not probably a billionaire dollars, which earning, so I have my cutthroat budget to pay myself as well as for my family. Now, how to balance this out, look as part of his ongoing education, whether he will be at par to the competitive, getting into the college or not, is what I'm looking at. So what I'm trying to say is that it's very difficult at this point, and now I'm also challenged, along with all of you, that how to maintain this kind of status compared to the schools or colleges? Should I go out or not? I'm not planning to sell my house, but I'm trying to be very cognizant of the situation, that whatever we are discussing, we have favor, we have not favor of the discussion of the budget. But some of the parents may have an opportunity to go out because their kids are almost there. My situation is, I have to stay because I want to have a better livelihood. So what I'm pleased to help in terms of somebody said, can we manage the budget? Don't need to spend everything, we already voted for this one, but definitely want to have a better approach, how to hold this, do a better man, not increasing any more budget going forward. We want to be watchful ourselves, and we are responsible to tell our own situation and explaining how we can do better job. So I'm going to read out all the meetings, emails, I'm trying to compare, and also come prepared to ask more questions. And hopefully, one day, I will be at that chair to vote for the betterment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll say, if you guys do want question and answer, emailing the BOE at HTTPS is a good way to do that. We can respond to those emails and explain things if there's questions.
Andarv Shah from Lawrence Court, Hillsborough. Thank you, board members, and everybody. A proud father of two daughters who graduated from Hillsborough Township, right? I've heard about everything, and I just am here to give... I've heard about everything, and I just am here to give some statistics, so that, you know, Superintendent, when I see your weekly response or anything, you can respond on the same. Like Bridgewater School District has 8,000 students versus Hillsborough School District has 7,300 students. Bridgewater getting $15 million state aid while Hillsborough gets $17.3 million state aid. Also, Bridgewater Board of Education budget is $188 million, which is 2.5% increase versus Hillsborough $176 million, which is a 16% increase, for only 10% less students than Bridgewater. So my question is, which already has been asked by others, that what went into the thought process and everything when the Board approved the increase of taxes, and what this education board is going to do different for the students, so that, you know, they can really have cherished life and everything, because most of us are in retirement age and everything. And I do, you know, I see people who are already retired trying to meet their ends meet, and this tax increase is really impacting our lives very bad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me well? Because my most big comment there is that it's very difficult to understand the discussion in this enormous room, so I don't know if the sound system is up to the power or anything, but I would suggest to make the meeting in a smaller room so people can really be part of the discussion. I'm not going to comment on what people are saying or say things that are equivalent to that, I kind of agree with some of them. My question is like, where is the discussion on how to save money for the school system? Well, maintaining a good education. Where is this discussion taking part? Where are all these people that have a high salary apparently, are they there to solve this problem? I know it's complicated, but where are the people to solve this problem? Because it cannot keep going up and up, driving people out of its boroughs. So, that's my question. I don't know if you have an answer. What are the solutions, for example, that were proposed and not taken to try to mitigate the problem of the budget for the school system here?
This is not a Q&amp;A session, so we appreciate the comment, we can provide some outside of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm not really familiar with this system, but maybe a more open discussion would be good as well with Q&amp;A, you know, just a suggestion. Thank you.
So for those in the room, we do have a couple of times a year, we have what we call community engagement nights, and those evenings are built specifically as Q&amp;A in the entire meeting. We invite the public to join and ask questions, and we can answer them in a Q&amp;A session. So, these regular Board meetings are effectively for the public to watch us do the Board business. That's really the intention with the ability for the public to provide comments, so that's why it's not Q&amp;A.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Falkenstein, I'm Dip Mar Circle. So, although I appreciate you mentioning before that you were told by the Tax Office not to discuss taxes directly, I think many of us, probably you guys as well...
I apologize, I'm going to interrupt for a second. They didn't want us to talk about assessments or anything related to that.
Okay. So many of us, I'm sure you guys as well, also saw the post from the talk with the mayor and the Tax Assessor's Office, where they said that they can't answer any of those questions for us to come here and talk with you guys. So I guess my question is, I don't even know, I mean, I've never been to a meeting, this is the first one I've come to, I will scan your QR code and follow and all of that going forward, but is it even a possibility to have all the players in the room to have a conversation, to have a meeting together? Because it just seems kind of ridiculous to ask the mayor and the tax assessor, and then be shuffled to the Board of Ed, and then be told to go back to the mayor and the tax assessor. It just seems like this giant game of pinball, and I think a lot of the questions can be answered for people that way. I don't even know if that's an option.
Okay. Thank you. So I can say, at the last community engagement night, I believe members of the Township Committee were in attendance, I believe so. I don't believe they asked any questions or joined in the conversation and all, but they did attend and listen, I think, at that point in time, and that was when we were discussing the budget. There was a handful of people supportive of the full increase, some that wanted none, some that wanted a partial increase, so there was good conversation. I think the links that you provide, one of them is the community engagement night, so you can see that conversation that occurred. But we will have another, we have them a couple of times a year, and if you sign up for that newsletter, that information will be in there, as well as listed on our meeting agenda, our meeting list.
How are you? My name is Matt Hershorn, I live on Pleasant P. Road in Hillsborough. We're new to the area, we've only been here for, I think, about three years now. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. And my cousins grew up here, they recently moved out, but I knew that the school system was good, that was a big reason that we came here to start a family, and we have an 18-month-old now, and so I understand about budgets and how hard things can be, and we understand the world around us, obviously it's changing as time goes by. What I would say is, a lot of people in my position who are fortunate enough to move here are a little upset about, obviously, the changes that have occurred. My child is not in the school system yet, and I moved here to make sure that they would be in the school system. And if things are tight and we're having trouble making ends meet, then I look at a lot of the numbers on that sheet that are salaries for the individuals in front of me, and I know your jobs deserve pay, but I know in my household, if things are tight, my child eats first, okay? And if your salaries are able to go up year over year over year, that doesn't help make ends meet. And there should be changes in that regard, and I definitely think the community should be very involved. I appreciate, obviously, that we can be involved, and that's good that, obviously, I can get those emails and start to look into these things. But hearing from a lot of people, and just talking to a lot of people in town, it seems like a lot of people were left out of that conversation, as which is something that basically showed up at our front doors, and now also we're being told, no, you still don't have a say in it, we're just going to move forward with it, and we're not going to have any questions about it, and everyone, as usual in politics, is now pointing fingers back and forth. So, I think especially as you're going towards maybe some new elections and things along those lines, there needs to be accountability. It's like, we're all adults here, and, you know, really take that to heart, and understand that you will definitely see changes in town if these things continue to go up. And all these people that now have children that are graduating and doing well, which is a good thing, they're going to move away, and there's not going to be anyone like myself to fill those roles, and it's going to be even harder for you to make those ends meet. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Francis, I live in 2 O'Neill Court, Hillsborough. I know it is very tight for everybody in terms of paying these taxes. I have my wife who was working, she lost her job nine months, and the entire household income is myself, okay? Now, thinking about my family, I'm sure there are many other families who are undergoing in the same direction, because the markets are not good. In that aspect, if I'm working in a private company, they look at who's good and who's bad, and they remove people, right? My wife, unfortunately, their company got merged, and there are too many people out there to get them out. The same direction, how is this Board of Education looking into that kind of area? Because you are not just increasing the budget, you're putting, you know, the pain onto the people who are leaving here. Myself, I think, you know, I go to Allen Town, it's only 10,000 taxes. For me, it's now 16,000 taxes. I save 6,000. I have a kid, but I'm looking in that aspect. What I want to try to say is, don't make this as a ghost town. When you're trying to increase the taxes, see the variables of other things, like, you know, people's job, people are liking it or not, maybe there should be a voting system with the residents, voting it, saying, okay, they are accepting it. I agree with Bala and a lot of people were saying about it. I don't mind, education is important, it gives you a lot of things, but, you know, understanding the market situation, people losing jobs, people not getting jobs, I mean, of course, my wife started taking a tuition, she started tuition, she said she will do anything she wants. But again, to again revamp and bring back to the level where she wants to be, it will take a lot of time, and to pay such taxes is horrendous for us. I just want to put that into the perspective. Second thing is, when you're increasing taxes, there are so many expenses you have on your list, right? What are unnecessary expenses? Have you identified that? Have you removed that from the budget? I would like you guys to look at it, and I will subscribe myself also to see that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I see nobody else. Oh. Ms. Gabor Bailes.
Hi, hi, can you hear me? My name is Leisha Gabor Bailes, I live in Hillsborough, just wanted to mention a couple of things in case you're not aware. There are free programs, especially if you're over 65, that might help you. Stay New Jersey, the Anchor Program, and the Senior Freeze. Senior Freeze is definitely for age 65 and up. One of them is for people who earn 500,000, or someone just came to my house and talked about that today, so it's on fresh in my mind. Let's see, so, just, I know that the Township is saying, okay, look at the schools, look at the Township, just letting you know that they've raised their tax levy 6.9%, then 15.34%, and then 10.6%. But, you have to think, what are you getting for that? Everyone likes to have new roads, right? I know that was a big thing on their budget, so the roads, the sidewalks, police, just, so just, I'm just having you to see, like, where things are going, and also I know that their budget is a quarter of the size of the schools, but just wanted to mention that, okay? Let's see. Just with healthy start hours, I just wanted to mention that again, I have my little t-shirt on, as you're thinking about redistricting, if you could think about how you're going to be possibly changing the bus schedules, if you could think about possibly pushing back the high school by at least 30 minutes, I've talked, or a group of us have talked with the sports director, he thinks that would be fine to do about 30 minutes. Also, if changes are happening in the high school, that would be a possibility. I just put random things on this to talk about. Also, as you were saying, that they've always been saying with quarters, with going back to the taxes, third quarter, you don't just multiply that by four. I think that they just haven't gotten all the different pieces together of the budgets, that's why they haven't sent out the fourth quarter amounts yet. Oh, another thing, if you wanted to help the schools, if you could talk to legislators, ideally, like, I think that the ones in our town that represent us understand this and know this, but if you know of anybody outside of our area, ask them to please keep the state aid loss at 0 to 2%, so that we're not still going to be losing more money. I know that some people have been advocating for that, but if more people understand it, that would be helpful for the schools. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Now seeing no others, I will close public comment, and I'll actually start with a comment. So first of all, we're not blaming the Township. I know people say, you know, kind of blame the school, blame the town. The town does their own thing, they have their assessments that they do, and that affects something. The Board did, with the 5-4 vote, approve the tax increase, so that's a decision of the members up here. I know when I joined the Board, it was right after, I think, 51 positions were eliminated, and I ran on the idea that I was never going to let something get so bad that we had to fire dozens or even like 50-plus staff. And over the last couple of years, budgets have gotten thinner and thinner and thinner, and every year it starts out with, here's our budget from last year, we have, you know, X percent salary increase, buses is up 9%, costs of goods are up 6%, and here we are getting a 0% increase or a loss from the state. So, when it comes down to it, it's not bad budgeting, it's the cost of living in the state and us getting not only no increase from the state, but getting reductions from the state. And this is because the state, in their formulas, says there's a local fair share, which is what they say you should be paying as a town, what adequacy is, and if you're below those numbers, they take money. So this year's opportunity was for any school district that was below adequacy? I think it was adequacy, right?
I think it was adequacy also.
Yeah, so if you were below adequacy, you could raise taxes up to adequacy, and that is the level at which the state says is the bare minimum that local citizens should be paying taxes, in which in theory they would not then take away additional funds from you. So, as crazy as that sounds, this is the level the state thinks the Township should be taxed, and where we're at. And other areas across the state that are getting more money is because they are above adequacy or some combination of mathematical equations that the state decides, which they don't give us kind of a clear example. So, every year, the budget starts out with, what do we have, what did we do last year, where can we trim? And this year, before we did the increase, we were going to have to eliminate, I don't know, what is, 15 to 20 positions within the district, and potentially the following year, another 15, 20 positions within the district, having eliminated software and spending and goods and supplies and everything throughout the district to bare bones. So I want the community to know, with a 5-4 vote, it was agreed to, to raise taxes, and this was not taken lightly. We are all taxpayers, we share the burden of paying taxes, just like you. The level of impact is different per family, per person, but I felt strongly that when I joined the Board, my goal was not to have this district take the enormous hit that it did, whatever it was, six years ago, where we lost 51 staff, and that was my mindset. And you may disagree with it, and I appreciate that, and there are four Board members that voted no against this, because they either didn't think the amount was appropriate, or they didn't think any tax increase should be done without, you know, voting for that tax increase. So I just want members of the public to understand, I understand your frustration, I understand the concern, but in my position, I'm the steward of the school, and that's what I was elected to do, and that was the decision that I made. So, I respect everybody's opinion here, I appreciate you guys showing up and coming to the meeting and speaking. We do care about your opinions, we're doing our best in future years to reduce the tax increase burden. Again, every year, it depends what the state chooses to do. There may be a new governor, well, there will be a new governor, and they may decide, hey, we're going to change the formula, now Hillsborough, you're getting 10 million a year every year, because now you're paying too much taxes. I mean, who knows, or they could come back and say, Hillsborough, you're under again. Hold, please, please, guys, this, we don't know what the state is going to bring to us, is my point. Public comment is closed, please. So, we'll have more meetings, and we encourage you guys to come back and provide more comments again, or to email the Board where we can have a conversation with you. But I'm just explaining my perspective on here, and every Board member has their own perspective. As we go around, if anybody wants to make comment, I really encourage Board members to do so if they feel so inclined. But like I said, this decision was not taken lightly, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of committee discussions, a lot of on-the-days discussions, and we had a community engagement night specifically around the budget, that we had about 100 people show up to and have conversations with them. So, I will end my comment there, and I'll open up to other Board members if they'd like to make any additional comments. Ms. Jackson.
I just, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the tax assessor, because when all hell broke loose essentially, they did step up, you know, and they went into the fire instead of running away from it, so it shows a leadership role. I'd also like to thank the Township Committee, because they are trying, and they have set pushback on the affordable housing mandates, so that's part of our problem here as well. So, you've made comments, the first speaker made comments, I think, look at the root cause of the problem, and it all boils down to the governor's S2 formula, and if you're going to vote for a new governor, please make sure you read what their policies are. And another gentleman mentioned that it's the cost of everything in life, it's the cost of unemployment. So, again, you know, my hope for everyone is that you look at truly who you're voting for and what they stand for, so that we can stop this abuse, you know? It's just plain and simple abuse to keep taking money from people and thinking that it's okay, because it's not, so...
Yeah, and I'll just add on to that, you know, when it comes down to it, there's about two-thirds of the districts in the state that get money every year, and about a third of the districts that lose money. So to Ms. Jackson's point, look at who's running at the state level, look who your local representatives are, and look at their approach to state funding when it comes to education because that's going to decide year after year what kind of funding we get to support our schools. And hopefully, if that increases, it's less of a burden on the taxpayers. That's, that's our hope moving forward. Hope doesn't pay the bills, though, unfortunately.
Question. Do we have a date?
Oh, sorry. Can you, the microphone, just make sure you're.
I'm leaning into the microphone. Do we have a date for the community night?
We have one on the books for the fall, but we need to, I think we need to adjust that date.
Yeah. I don't know if we have solidified yet, but we are going to have another community engagement night in the fall. So I think your point is, Mr. Davis, we will get that out to the community as much as possible. However, if you are not connected to the schools, meaning you don't have a kid in there, it's often tough to get that out. We do send messages through the township, but that's why I want to make sure before anybody leaves tonight to please sign up, that even if you delete half of our emails during the year, there's going to be that one that says, there's a community engagement night. And our budget season generally starts, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ecker, we generally start in October and then it ends at the end of April. And starting in October, one of the things that you will get out is a community input form besides a community engagement night that you can come out to and talk and discuss. And that's why it's so important to get your contact information so that we can tell you, hey, fill out this form and tell us what you're looking for or not looking for, or come out to this night where you can have the back and forth with board members. And like I had said, I will, if you sign up tonight, I will send you a link of four videos, and one of them is the community engagement night. So you can see what that looks like. It's not set up like this with formalities and going through motions. It's question, answer, question, answer, question, answer. And we know that you as a public need that too. We just need to make sure that you get that information, and the best way that you can do that is by signing up. So, Mr. Davis, long story short, I don't think we finalized that date yet, but we can do that within the next couple of weeks. I think we were looking October, November. So we, we will certainly get that out in plenty of time in advertising.
Mr. Hill?
So I think part of the issue for this budget cycle was that although technically the budget gets started in October, for this budget cycle, we were not informed by the state that we even had the ability to go above the 2% cap until April 7th board meeting. And then we had our, our community engagement night on Thursday that week, on April 10th. And then there was one week spring break, and then we were back, and then we voted on April 28th, and we had a lengthy discussion, the four of us, Ms. Stats, Mr. Davis, Ms. Jackson, myself, who voted no, you know, for various reasons. And I think Ms. Stats, you brought up about some compromise. Didn't have to be nothing, it didn't have to be the 22.6. My, one of my concerns, and since everybody is here, is the number that was, that is reported in the news, it, it's either wrong, inaccurate, or it changes from whatever news outlet. Some news outlets are reporting, and I think some speakers tonight are reporting the overall school budget. That's not really fair and really doesn't impact you. What you really need to look at is the local levy portion of it. And one of the, one of the comments that I made on April 28th, I think that was the date, was that last year, in July of 2024, the state gave this board an opportunity to go up 9.9%. So exceed the 2% cap, go up 9.9%. This board voted 7 to 2 to exceed that cap. So we added $5.7 million, last year's budget, beyond the 2.96 budget that we already approved back in April. So that budget increase was above 2%. Then with the 5 to 4 vote back in April, we raised the, the tax levy by $26.6 million because the number that's reported, some of the numbers are like 22 million, that was a difference between the tentative budget and the final budget. But between last year's budget, which was already increased to this year's tentative, that was something on the order of $4.6 million. So that when you ended up, and on April, you ended up with a $26.6 million increase, which meant that over two years, the, the local levy rose $35 million, and that's a 32% increase. And that was the reason I voted no, because that, to me, was, well, ridiculous and unsustainable. So could not convince my fellow board members, like, I don't know, I think other, the people who voted no with me had already had their own reasons for, but it could not convince others that we really should, if we're going to increase the taxes by that much, really to ask the taxpayers. You know, we asked the taxpayers back in November 2023. We, we asked the taxpayers in November 2023 for the security and the staffing referendum, and they said yes. And I don't hear people, I don't, excuse me, I don't hear people, you know, complaining about that because they had a voice in it. And I think that's, that's what's the most troubling for me.
Thanks, Mr. Hill. Anyone else? Ms. Stats?
Just some random notes that I took here, but to follow up on what Mr. Hill said. So it's two years in a row we've gone above the, the cap. And what I worry about is we're jeopardizing the goodwill of our residents, our taxpayers, and that could be a problem in the future if we, we, we're pretty sure we want a, a new high school, and we'll definitely have, have to have a referendum for that. So we might be jeopardizing that. Also, as, as has been stated, we've, our, now stated, it has gone down several times. And the state formula, we had the S2 formula, I think that's passed. But the state form has been in existence even before the budget cap was put in, which I think makes it obsolete, shouldn't make it obsolete. So we really need to encourage our state lawmakers to come up with a new state formula. It will take time, probably a couple of years at least, but they need to start now. Like I said, this has been going on for probably 15, 20 years through several administrations, and everybody just keeps passing the buck. So if you can encourage your lawmakers to do that. There's more than one reason why the taxes went up. Property reassessments have increased, but, you know, I'll admit it, most of it is because, I think 66% of the taxes go to the school district. So we're the big reason for it. We did have, it wasn't all or nothing without, for, to do that. If we did not take advantage of, you know, going above the, the cap, yes, we would have lost, as Mr. Marine said, we would have lost a lot, a lot of positions, a lot of other things that we've already gone bone dry on. Mr. Ecker and his team, they've done a great job trying to find places where we can cut back without hurting students, because that's what this is all about, right? It's about students. But we could, there was a way, we could have gone increased, gone above the, the cap, but still have a flat school tax rate. That didn't happen. And we would not have lost positions, we would have even been able to even go beyond And also, the amount that we, you know, we went up 20-some million dollars, and then the state kicked in an additional $1 million. That was not the reason why people voted for it, though. It's almost like an afterthought, you know? The reason why people voted for it was because they could then get 20 more million dollars. It wasn't say, weren't saying, okay, let's, let's, you know, increase the tax levy by over $20 million just to get the $1 million. That was totally irrelevant. Also, all of us who are property owners, we all do pay taxes, but it does hurt some people more than others. People have different circumstances, so it's something we, we should always have in the back of our mind. And also, for those people who are, you know, not, were not in favor of, of this increase, that doesn't, doesn't mean they don't like the school, they don't support students. I mean, people are really in a hard place. So, and that's, that's where they're coming from. It's not because they don't like, like students. On the other hand, people who did vote for it, that doesn't mean they're totally disregarding people who are struggling. It was a hard decision for all of us to make, and it ended up being a, a big increase that is going to be a hardship for a lot of people.
Yeah. I'll second Ms. Stats' comment. Those who voted no care equally about this district. It's just a different approach to, to funding. And the goal is, and the hope is, that this stabilizes the district for quite some time and allows us to plan for the future and, and hopefully never have to go through this again. The state told us this is a one-time opportunity, so that kind of put us on it a little bit to make a decision. Now, who knows if that's true or not, but that was the, the message we were given, so. All right. Anything else from board members before we close the meeting? Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.